Good evening. Our City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Eternal God, I have an apostle again. We come in your presence. We're grateful for this opportunity to give us wisdom and knowledge. And as we go through this Advent season, may there be peace on earth and goodwill among all men. We ask these blessings in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
As we did not have a closed session, there is no Freedom of Information Act certification this evening. There are also no approval of minute items on this agenda and no special presentations. So at this time, we would consider the adoption of the entire agenda, including the consent agenda unless someone would like an item pulled separately.
So move, Mayor.
All right. Councilman Fawcett has a second. Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Mayor Johnson. Yes. The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero. Thank you very much. Do we have any agenda speakers this evening?
No, ma'am.
Would you please present the consent agenda items for consideration?
Item number seven, a resolution to accept a donation of personal property for the Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue. Item number eight, a resolution adopting the 2021 legislative agenda for the City of Suffolk. And item number nine, an ordinance to amend and reordain the adopted fiscal year 2020/2021 fee schedule for the City of Suffolk, Virginia to defer rate increases for metered and not metered water and sewer usage and meter service charges until April 1st, 2021.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, would you please provide the overview?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. On item seven, the Hampton Roads Planning District purchased four mass casualty incident transport buses on behalf of local jurisdictions. In this first round of grants, they were able to purchase four, one for Suffolk, one for Virginia Beach, and the counties of York and the county of Alawak. The purpose of the buses is support the Hampton Roads Metropolitan Medical Response System. They were purchased again by grant funding. They are a 2020 Ford Starcraft, which will be accepting it can transport nine stretcher patients, 10 seated patients, and two wheelchairs in value of about $125,000. The city will provide a stretcher, radio, and other EMS supplies, and will be responsible for the maintenance of the vehicle. We also, by agreement, would be responding to other mass casualty instances in the Hampton Roads region if needed. Adoption of the resolution is necessary to accept and record the donation of the personal property. The resolution under Agenda Item Number Eight is for the adoption of the city's 2021 legislative agenda. At your last meeting, we had a staff report of the proposed draft agenda, and there was some conversation by council considering or concerning some of the transportation corridors and the request for funding support for those, specifically Route 58 and Route 17 corridors. Those modifications were included by staff into the draft legislative agenda, and if there's no other request, then the agenda is ready for adoption, and so we can provide it to our representatives. Item number nine, as you may recall, in the FY 2021 budget, the schedule of fees, we had proposed rate increases both for water and sewer usage and meter service charges. Earlier this summer, we did do some refunding, and they would be effective by the budget October 1st. Earlier this year, we did some refunding some geo bonds. We were able to come back to you with ordinance, and we delayed those rate increases until January 1st, 2021. Again, we went back through the assistance of our financial advisors and the Virginia Resource Authority. We were able to refinance the 2015 VRA bonds that the utility funds had, the revenue bonds, and that provided a savings of over $400,000, approximately $433,000 for the current fiscal year. That allows us to, again, come to you requesting to delay or defer those rate increases until April 1st of 2021. At that time, we'll take a look at our revenues and expenditures to gauge where we are three quarters through the year, and we'll have further discussions at that time on that. So we do recommend adoption of the ordinance to defer those rate increases until April 1st, 2021.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilman Fawcett?
No, ma'am. I'd just like to make one, two real quick comments. On the mass casualty transport unit, that is a big deal to be able to get one of those in the event that we have a major incident that we need to move some people. I'm sure this will come in very handy. It's fantastic. It's brand new, pretty much, and it's $125,000. We didn't have to take out of pocket, so I consider that a big plus. The other thing is, I'm real pleased that we're getting an opportunity to expand on the water sewer rate till April. We started off, if you remember, back in COVID, to get that through when the budget started. So that's a real good thing for all our citizens to get a little more break, particularly with COVID now starting to ramp a little bit. So I'd like to just move to approve it as written.
Have a second?
Have a second.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Have a second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you very much. We have no public hearings. We have no ordinances and no resolutions. So that brings us to our staff reports this evening, and our first staff report is a proposed sign ordinance text amendment, and I'd ask the manager to give an overview.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As you're aware, and have been previously briefed on this, Supreme Court decision previously ruled that signs cannot be content-based. They must be regulated by type. Tonight's staff report will address the changes within the UDO that will bring us in compliance with that decision. It also will address some of the changes that we've done or recommend to do outside that. The proposed revisions were reviewed by the Planning Commission at their October meeting with one modification, which we'll discuss during the staff report. We do anticipate bringing this back for a public hearing at your December 16th meeting, so we can take public comment at that time, and also for your consideration of the ordinance. At this time, well, David's already there. I won't call him there. He's already there. So David Hanley, Director of Planning and Community Development, will give the staff report.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, thank you for that introduction to this subject matter. As stated, this is required to conform to a Supreme Court decision. Andy, if you can roll to the screen. We are apparently, our advance are went south for the winter already, so we're going to have Andy advance slides. There is a town called Gilbert in Arizona that regulated signs the same way as we regulate signs. The one on the sign on the left is the sign that caused all the issues. It's what we call a snipe sign here. They regulated that sign type by content, and they had a different timeframe that was allowed for that type of sign to be placed out versus other types of signs that are similar to it. And the church pastor sued, and the result that came through the Supreme Court decision, as stated by City Manager, is that signs cannot be content-based. They got to be location-based and other bases. Andy, can you roll the next slide? The Supreme Court found as part of that decision that many of the regulations not tied to content can be used to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and interest, et cetera, based upon size, location, movability, and lighting. The current sign regulations that we have, as I stated, are content-based, and they've been analyzed to assure that the signs are regulated in a content-neutral manner. The proposed changes move towards a regulating by type and location. Next one, please. Article seven of the UDO is where the majority of the information for signs is housed. Currently, the UDO defines many sign types by their anticipated content, i.e. political signs, rentals, real estate, and temporary signs and banners. Next one. Staff, and when I say staff in this context, it includes great participation that we had from the City Attorney's Office on reviewing this item in context with previous approved ordinances around the region that have stood the test of legal challenges. So when this one was revamped, it was revamped in accordance with those provisions. Appendix A, as everyone knows, is our definition section, and we removed unnecessary references to signings of that. So we're trying to consolidate everything in a one-stop shop in 714. So if you want to find anything about signs, we don't direct you all over the sign, all over the ordinance now. It'll be in 714. Everything will be in there, and I'll demonstrate that later through the presentations. There are six sections in the UDO that require changes because there are signs standards in each of these. In the 412 for SCOD, 419 for mixed-use development, 603 for landscaping standards, 707 for home occupation, and 714 for signs, and Appendix A for definitions. The intent of these proposed changes is to stay true to our current regulations while bringing them into compliance. We were not trying to reinvent the wheel. If you had a sign here that you could permit today, we're trying to get it to where you can permit that sign tomorrow. So we're not changing the wheel, and we're not changing the standards. We're actually going to show you some area where we're loosening some standards and making them more palatable with the way development wants to be. Next one, Andy. Sign regulations for signage setbacks and height regulations largely stay the same unless there was an opportunity to correct some regulations that were identified as too restrictive, and I'll detail some of these in there. Due to too many temporary signs being defined by their content, like political, real estate, you know, garage sales and everything, they were revamped and standardized regulations for temporary signings. This is one of the biggest hangups that we had going through there was how to temporize those signs. Next one, please. This one's probably too detailed to read, but it goes through the signs that you currently define. I always pick on the menu board. If you're in going to order supper on the way home from here tonight, and you want to order something, you see the menu board. Well, just think where you're at. You're in the drive-thru. So after the sign ordinance is adopted, it's a drive-through sign. It's not a menu board sign. It's still there, still permitted on the same size and same context. So this is the old and the new table for what the signs would become classified as. Next one, please. There are signs that do not require a permit. These are the same ones as today, essentially, with one addition into here. When we want to put a sign up, like at a park or anything, we don't have to get a permit for that. Ordinary maintenance of signs, this is cleaning, repainting them, doesn't require a permit. Installation of a minor sign, that's like at a home occupation, you're allowed to put a one-foot square sign up indicating that you have a practice there at your house. That doesn't require a sign. That's a new addition on this thing. And installation of a temporary signs, those are the, I hate to say it, the snipe signs that you stick in the ground, and they're not permitted. Prohibited signs, these are the same ones as we currently have today. Essentially, if you go out of business, you've got to take your signs down. Billboards, unless they're otherwise specified, we do not permit vehicular signs. That's where a vehicle is wrapped, essentially, and never moves. It is meant to stand as a sign at that location for advertising purposes only. Off-premises signs, you can't put, you know, something down the road from where you're at, and roof signs unless there's a specific ordinance section that allows that. You did provide one provision that allowed and addressed the marina facility. Prohibited signs, portable signs, these are the ones, infamous ones that have some age to them now, although you can still find them out in the marketplace. These are the ones with the flashing arrow on top of. Signs in the right-of-way, if they're in the right-of-way, we will pick them up. Signs that contain pennants, banners, streamers, and such, that they are similar moving advances. Signs that impede traffic or safety that will also are prohibited. Next one. This one was put in as a result of several requests that we've had about how we calculate sign area, and this is just two examples of how simple it is. We put a box around the area that constitutes the sign, and that's the size of it. And also, then you pick and choose the box for a monument sign and everything, and oning signs, how we box them in. Next one. There are some sign placement standards that we have. Signs 10 foot outside the right-of-way, that's today's. Oning signs, we're clarifying that they got to be seven and a half feet at least above the sidewalk. Permit signs only on improved properties and freestanding signs that require landscape plans. On the permanent signs, ones, those are the signs that require a permit, and that's what the Planning Commission wanted to add into 412 as part of their review of the request. That's on how we actually operate things. They wanted to put, make sure that there was only an application required for a permanent sign. The word "permanent" wasn't in there. It was a little ambiguous. So they recommended that to be added to it. Next one, please. Here's 714, the one-stop-shop. If you know what your sign type is on the left, you know what your zoning district is, then you can go to the next table and find out how many square feet you're allowed, the height, the number allowed, and any other regulations in the 714 section that you referred to. So Andy, flip to the next one. Continued again, as in the next one, the drive-thru. Currently, there's menu boards and order boards. So they are all in there the same sizes as before. Next one, please. Here's an improvement that we've made. A lot of folks are going to electronic message boards. They are currently permitted, and the size did not change, or the ratio did not change. However, new, the changes are allowed for every 60 seconds. Currently, it says once an hour. So there can be more messages placed on that. But you cannot do it by rolling or motion. A lot of these signs you will see, they kind of scroll off as a new message comes on. That's not allowed here. They got to go off and on. They got to be able to adjust to ambient light conditions and not exceed the foot candle ratio. You don't need as much candlelight power at night to make a sign as visible as during the daytime because you're not competing with the sun. Roof signs permitted at waterfront sites, and freestanding signs at shopping centers are permitted up to 15 feet. This is another add-on because we're getting more mixed-use development districts. One monument sign up to 45 feet tall and 450 square feet is allowed if it is along a limited or restricted access highway. That's where these tend to be located. It's allowed to be 450 square feet. They got to be 10 to 50 feet outside the right-of-way, and they got to be separated from each other by about a half a mile. Next one, please. These are going through campuses. When we, for instance, dealt with the Centerra campus up on 17, we had a whole sign package that we went through and used that to create these intersection ones where we have sign regulations that dealt with entrances and intersections about directions, and these are typical ones. They're designed for folks who are driving through, so they are not up high like most traffic control signs are. They're down at a greater visibility level for the driver and for pedestrians. Next one, please. Same thing in commerce or industrial parks where you have more than one parcel. You can have no other freestanding sign on that entranceway as the current one does. Next one, please. And then culturally significant properties, this is a new section. You can have three additional signs located on that property. Signs can be four-foot in height, seven square feet, and are directed towards pedestrians or vehicles on site. Eliminations, there are standards for there that we've replicated. Entering signs, for instance, can only be externally lit going into residential subdivisions, and minor signs and culturally significant property signs cannot be illuminated. That's current standard two. Next one, please. Sign changes. This one, we had some discussion about this based upon actual practice. There was an increase allowed in the amount of window sign area that was allowed to be applied to this. Based upon current practices, this should make the signs more compliant that are currently out there right now. Next one, please. Temporary signs. Here's the one where you've got yard signs, banners, feather flags, and signs located for sale of property. The standard is in there about the size of the square footage, maximum height, number allowed. Next one, please. And in the CBD, this is primarily aimed, I will tell you, at the Cultural Arts Center because they have two large panel areas that they have requested multiple times to have banner permits. So staff has done that through a temporary use permit. This is a more proper procedure to have them through is by ordinance being compliant. Next one, please. Temporary signs are not permitted in the right-of-way. They're not allowed to be lit, and residential uses are allowed to no more than two yard signs in any given time, not to exceed the total combined square footage of 12 square feet. So you could have a yard sale sign and a political sign in your yard at the same time.
Question. Suppose you want five different candidates. You're telling me you can only have two?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that okay from a legal standpoint? I don't think so either.
I don't think so either.
Hello, you want to?
Vice Mayor Johnson, I would have to do some research on that. The question that I asked of me before, I think from my understanding, there are several localities that are using the same standard. Today we do?
I'm sorry. Today we do have Carla Carter, who's worked with the planning department to address all of these issues that we came up with the signs, and I think she's outside of the chambers because she couldn't get in due to staff. She didn't come in there.
Good evening.
I haven't had lip gloss on in so long. Now I just missed my opportunity.
There's no need.
Okay. This question dealt with the number of signs, and we advised them honestly that as it relates to temporary signs, it's going to be difficult to enforce some of these regulations. We just brought it as close as we could to what we believe the Reed case is dictating for us to do. But honestly, we know that there are going to be problems enforcing some of the temporary sign aspects of it, including the political.
I've got a list for you if you want to get started, because I don't think you can legally tell someone they can't have more than two. You know, let's say there's six candidates for, you know, president, vice president, and you go on down the line. How do you decide which two?
And we did advise staff of the challenges with regard to temporary signage. We just think that it's going to be very difficult to enforce. So we were very upfront with that at the beginning.
Thank you.
And Mayor, this is the presentation, and it's designed for you all to give us questions. And so it's not going to be presented until we come back. So all of these things that you all are asking, we are writing down to bring back, and when it's presented the next time, hopefully, we will have some answers to it. I would submit that the issue is, what we're trying to address was the content. I cannot say that you cannot regulate the number of signs that a person has on there. To say that, whether it's legal, illegal, I would ask the opportunity for our office to do more research.
I just think you have a free speech issue there, but okay.
I think that it's a real challenge, and as based on the research we've done up to this point, trying to enforce that number or the duration is going to be difficult from an enforcement standpoint practically. It'll be hard to enforce that, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. Andy, next slide, please. There are temporary signs allowed in commercial industrial areas too. Each sign is at 12 square feet in area non-residential areas. Again, six times a year for 20 days each in these districts. And the A-frame signs that you see primarily in the downtown area, they don't count towards the signings as long as they don't provide obstructing the sidewalk. If they obstruct the sidewalk, we'll request that they be removed for safety reasons. Next time. Banners are not allowed to obstruct windows or doors, and allowances based on the square footage of the building facade up to 32 square feet. And then in the central business district, they can have allowances with banners up to additional 20% of the area. Non-conforming signs, we get questions about this. If it's out there at the defective date of this ordinance, they can remain as non-conforming uses and such. They can't be enlarged, and if they're 50% damaged or more, they can be restored within two years. More than 50%, they must come back into compliance. They must conform with the statewide building code. Hazardous signs must be repaired within 30 days. Since I've been here, we haven't had a sign that's been designated as a hazardous sign. But falling wind events is the most frequent time that you have hazardous signs that get in that condition. Permanent signs where an activity or business has ceased, you must take the face off and replace with a blank face within 60 days. An abandoned sign structure which has not been accessory to an activity or used for more than two years must be removed. As stated, we are here giving you a briefing. Our plan is to bring this back before you in two weeks, and I can try to answer any questions, or else I'll call for a lifeline to Carla again.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a lot of other questions. How has this been told to the public? Have we had public meetings on this? What have we done with that?
We have had the public hearing before the Planning Commission, which was advertised, and no one came and spoke at that meeting.
That was advertised before that meeting. Who knew about it? Because I would expect, I've had calls on this myself just recently, and of course, I have nothing to talk to them about because I have no material to hold to look at, to read. I don't have any of this in my hand that I can talk about to see what it is. How does the public know other than what you did at the planning, before planning?
There have been, I think we've been before this body one other time for a work session about a year or so ago, maybe a little more. There have been several work sessions before the Planning Commission. I will tell you, parts of the sign industry have known that we're been at because they have submitted some requests to staff for consideration.
Like the building community, they are aware of all this and all that? Because I've got a call from, I had a call from some of the builders questioning some different things. I sent them back to y'all's office, of course. But also had some people from the public talking about the digital signs about every seven seconds. From an hour or whatever it might be, that might be in question?
Well, it's going from an hour to 60 seconds.
An hour to 60 seconds.
But if you have these, I'll call them electronic billboards, they are on a much faster schedule. They go about every 15 seconds. And there's been studies by, if I remember, Virginia Tech, who have found that that is not an obstruction to doing.
To driving, trying to read it as you're driving and all of that?
Yes.
Okay. I don't read that fast. Maybe six, when I see a sign on the road, if I see it, I don't know. Sounds awful fast. But my concern is making sure that the public is aware of this, and the business community is aware of this. is aware of this. And we've disclosed it, and we've talked about it, and they've seen it before we go voting on it next time. So that's my concern, Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And I want to echo what Councilman Goldberg said. This is the first time that I think we have seen this presentation. And it would be good, really, if we could get this ahead of time so we could sort of have more questions to ask when this come up, that we'll be more familiar with what you will present to us so that we could ask you more questions upfront now than later when you get ready to bring us back to us on the 15th. So it'd be good to get those things out to us earlier than the night of the presentation.
Councilman Johnson.
And I've had the same phone calls that Councilman Goldberg has from the public. The concerns, and it's something we probably need to address as a council in the future is the way we solicit input from the community. Because I'm getting some input, and I don't think that I'm going to be prepared to vote on December 16th. Because number one, we need to have, the council needs to have this information in front of them to, I need to spend a little time with it in order to make sure that I understand exactly what we're going forward with. This is important. And just like the mayor said, for the political signs, I had half a dozen political signs in my yard. I don't think this, we don't want to put something in here if we can't enforce it, in my opinion. Let's put forth an ordinance that we can enforce and something that is real and that the public can wrap themselves around and will do service to the public. So I'm, like the Vice Mayor, I would like to see this information in front of me before the next meeting so we can digest it, talk to our constituents about it, and bring back some solutions. And then if we have more solutions to come back on the 16th, we're not going to be ready to vote for on it, I don't think. I'm just concerned about the process. And I'm not sure that this is, I'm not sure this process is working right now. Thank you.
I'm going to take a little different avenue. I did read the proposed ordinance because it was given to me from someone outside. So they have been able to get it. I don't know how, but I'm just telling you. But I have some questions. You said roof signs on waterfront sites.
Yes.
Is that only in B2? What, I mean, a waterfront site, what do we need?
That does not have street fronts. It's very specific, and it was.
It was designed for the marina?
Yes.
Okay. So we just kind of, we're kind of moralizing that?
That was done about two years ago.
Right. But are we, what I'm asking is, are we increasing that? Or we're just moralizing that?
The same.
Next question I have is on real estate. I know snipe signage, you know, real estate, the push-in. What about the posts that are put in, that are put in the ground? Do they, are they going to need a permit?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay. I thought we didn't allow feather flags. Are we changing that?
We allow feather flags.
We do?
We don't allow the dancing man.
The dancing?
The guy that's with the hair and his arms flapped around.
I know there used to be a thing about feather flags because we were allowing only a couple in the entrance and whatever else.
Well, well.
So that's why I was just asking, are we changing that?
We do allow them. And they are extensively used in new subdivisions and.
They're used by realtors, too, a lot. And I currently tell them that, I didn't think you're supposed to have those, but I guess you can now.
And actually, the city uses them over at the farmer's market, so.
Okay. The other question, what is a culturally significant property?
That would be like, I was trying to think about one that's out away from something, like the lead church or something along that line that has a historic nature to it.
I guess my question is, who's going to determine that?
That is one of those items that we're going to have to work through and take guidance from folks on.
Okay.
That one is a new one.
And then the other thing is, one of the things I've been asked a lot about is, we don't know off-premise the sign. Okay? But if the person that the sign is on their property says they want that sign on their property, again, are we not getting into interpretation here? Because content, I thought that was the whole thing. There's some signs on 17, and there's two or three of them, that have been there for years off, and they were never touched. And then there were a couple put up, and they were taken down. So I guess what I'm saying is, you're going to have to be really, really consistent with this idea. And I'm not sure, again, if the content is there and the owner says it's okay to be there, then, you know, are we, are we okay to do that?
There are, I know several signs that are not on the premises where they're located. And I do believe that deals, the timing to when those signs were erected, based upon what code was in effect. If they did them today under the current code, they would be picked up and illegal. We have, I'll say, we have several signs that become into that category that I think, don't think people know that they're doing it that way illegally because they get permission from the property owner. But that off-premise sign is technically moving into almost the realm of a billboard because it's advertising a entity that is not on that property. It's smaller, smaller sign, but it is under the same.
I'm going to give you an example of what I'm, you know, let's say the owner of the property, it's a development that he has. And he has a sign on that property, but it talks about another development he has, same type, same, you know, different location. So are we saying that he can't have that sign that talks about that other location because technically it's off-premises?
Yes, ma'am. That would still make that less efficient.
Okay. I think that's going to be tough. I really do. And the last thing I'm just going to say is, and I don't mind telling you, it stems from political signs. If we cannot enforce what we put on the books, it's a waste of time. Because that's the problem that we have, and it's a problem we've always had. If you're not going to have, and I don't know that we have the manpower to do that. I'm not suggesting that we do or we don't. I'm just saying, if we can't, and if we don't, and it becomes, this got picked up, that didn't get picked, that's where we get in a real mess. So I'm just saying, whatever goes on the books, and it may happen way, I may not even be here. Make sure it's enforceable and that it's done consistently, or otherwise, it's just not worth having. And I'm done. Councilman Deamon.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, the mayor touched on a couple of questions I was going to ask in regards to the definition of a culturally significant property and how we're going to go about determining that. And the same issue with the signs. I mean, we've been through this before. I've seen a lot of things that we didn't enact because we didn't think they were going to be enforceable. But I think this is not only a matter of the process of enforcement, but legally is it enforceable. And especially as far as political signs are concerned and some other things. So like Councilman Johnson and Councilman Goldberg alluded to, I think we need to have a little bit more of a conversation before these things are put into play. Because once they are, the worst thing you can do is have it where there's no consistency. I mean, it definitely needs to be consistent across the board. We need to know that we have the right to place those restrictions on it. And then it needs to be applied, you know, consistently across, you know, the entire city. But with that being said, there are some really, really good changes, I think, we put in there. The digital sign change in every 60 seconds, I mean, that's kind of getting us into the 21st century. I know I've had a few banks that have called and said, I can't believe I got to leave my message up there for an hour before it changes. So that's, you know, that's a welcome sign. The 40% in the CBD, the window signage, I mean, that's, I mean, that's a great addition also because you're limited as to where you can place signage downtown. That'll allow you to put it in your window and be able to advertise your business and merchandise accordingly. And I also have a question there. The signage, the regulations that we're putting in place, do they, are they going to coincide also with the historic overlay requirements?
Yes, they will. They'll be compliant with, when they come through, yes.
So like the CBD regulations, the historic overlay, that'll, they're going to.
They'll work together, yes.
One is going to work hand in hand. Okay, that's, that's great. And a lot of these things still, you know, your temporary signage, a lot of that is still contingent upon your special event permit. Is that correct? You would still need to have your special event permit and then the signage that's allowed within that?
Not all temporary signs require special use. I mean, there, that, there's a broad category. I mean, yard signs includes political signs. They also include, you know, I'm having a yard sale sign. It would be for these contractors who are doing work at that facility, to put a sign in there so that people can find what they're doing on that facility.
And I believe the mayor, you mentioned flags also. I mean, we can put flags on poles now?
Feather flags.
Feather flags?
The ones that go.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, just a regular flag, like.
Yes. They'd be regulate, there is a number on them and a size on them that they can conform to, but they are allowed.
You just stick in the ground and they're kind of.
I mean, I was thinking like from hanging from light poles on car lots, that sort of thing.
Not a feather flag.
I will say, your nearest competitor has feather signs on occasion.
Yeah. But you could do a regular, just a normal flag, like a US flag or whatever on each one of your poles?
You're getting into the US flag code.
That's a different.
And that has specific uses, and it says that flags are not supposed to be used for commercial purposes. Not that I've been through that discussion before, but yes. There are standards and deal with the size of, size of flag on particular height of flag poles and everything, so. And that's in that code.
I appreciate the presentation, and I'm sure a lot of time and forethought went into the changes and streamlining them. And what we're trying to do is make it, I mean, what you're trying to do, obviously, is make it easier for people to do business in our city and make it easier to regulate, especially when you had, if you knew your zoning designation, you've got a quick way to try to determine what is and is not allowed. And I appreciate that effort, and I think we need to keep working towards initiatives like that in the future. And I'm looking forward to talking about this some more. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Fawcett.
Yeah. Thanks, David. I appreciate it. The 2015 Supreme Court decision that was based for the update held that the sign ordinance must now be of content neutral. Right. Now, I got a question from somebody that sent something in. It says, Section 31, 714d, prohibiting signs, and I think the mayor touched on this a little bit, is our belief that our, that your code may relate to a number and type, location and size of the signs on a partial, but not a sign's content. The only way to determine if the sign is on or off premises is by its content. Therefore, we believe that prohibiting off-premises signs should not, no longer be allowed. We'd ask deletion of section or item four from D and otherwise support the remaining ordinance. So there was somebody right there that disagreed between what the mayor was saying, on premises, off, based on.
We had a discussion with that individual, and we explained our position on it.
Just wanted to be clear, they got representation on that particular question.
We disagree with that assertion because the city is able to distinguish between an off-premise and an on-premise sign. And the restriction is location-based, not content-based, as they say. So their assertion that you can look at, in order to distinguish whether the sign is on or off, you have to look at content is not correct. The Supreme Court has clearly spoken on that matter and that the city, the government, is able to distinguish between what's on-premise or off-premise. So the city's prohibition against billboards is proper, and that's, that's been happening. That's not anything new. And the Reed case did not change the city's ability to enforce that.
Why is that called a billboard? I mean, we're, I'm talking a little sign. I'm not talking a billboard.
Well, the UDO definition of billboard, if it meets that definition, it would fit the definition of a billboard. You might think a billboard is a big sign.
That's what I think of as billboard, yeah.
Right. So you have to look at what the definition is under the regulations.
Yeah, this is essentially the thing that's advertising that an entity is not a foundation. It's essentially advertising it as a commodity or service that's not at that location. So.
I have one other question on the, like, the window signs and for the CBD and all that. Would that be the same for other businesses, let's say, in Harborview or Route 10 or, I mean?
There is an increase percentage for the CBD area. But the increase, there was an increase also for the signs in B2.
So it was like the 40% was in CBD and was the 25% was in the other?
Elsewhere.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Councilman Ward?
Yes, so I'd like to agree with a couple of councilmen saying, we got more information. It's just like, there's a lot of stuff, too, that we got tonight. Because this was one of the worst times I've seen with signs in the political, especially political signs. And I have called down because, like the mayor said, it was, we got to make sure we're going to enforce it. Because in the part, in the northern part of Suffolk, they have signs everywhere. And I got a lot of complaints of them, smaller signs all in the community. So I don't know how that is. And where we were prevented, prevented to have signs, the other signs are there. And one of the communities that, that somebody had redone the whole frame of a community. And I said to them, don't allow nobody to put signs in, but you have other signs right there where it was at. So what I'm saying with enforcement, and I'm going to go a little deeper because I had mentioned that when y'all pick up them signs, them signs cost money. And for y'all, for political reason, and you got signs all on the highway, and y'all gave some information, not put signs there, it wasn't enforced like it should have been. Because I rode around and seen signs that I knew where it was not supposed to be there. And not only that, I seen signs almost on where the interstate was, and it stayed there for a while. It had to be enforced because when you see them signs there, the first thing going to happen, everybody else will try to put their signs there. So what I'm saying to you, I like to see it being enforced. And when you get somebody's sign, it costs money for you to put it in the back of that truck. I mean, y'all had to do what you had to do, but just putting them signs in a truck, it still costs money, and them people need them signs. So I don't know how y'all can just make sure to, you be informed, the people, you have your sign here. If you take it up one time, you put a mark on it. If you take it up two times, you just keep it. But not to just have a truck full of signs where people are investing money in them signs, and you just pick them up and not following through. Because I like to see a possible, when you put the signs down and when the signs should be up, should be taken up. Because sometimes you see signs down there for a long period of time.
Well, that particular thing gets exactly into what caused the problem with Gilbert, is that that was a particular type of sign based upon content that had a particular sign timeframe to it. The same thing as the church sign did. It was a particular kind of sign based on content, and it had a sign difference that was different than the barber shop down the street.
Like I said, I'd like to get some more information.
Our current ordinance has that in it, but our belief and the cases that have been argued all the way up to Virginia's Supreme Court have not had that provision in it.
Are you speaking about the time to pick them up and put them down? We have a time that they have to be picked up.
Currently.
Right.
That would go away.
That's going to go away, too? So this sign's consistent?
Yeah, because that's the same.
Because I frankly think nothing's more disgusting, to see old signs sitting everywhere for months afterwards.
Well, it will be, as Councilman Ward alluded to, enforcement. I mean, this, and as Carla also indicated, is this is going to be us, depending upon some help from some folks about enforcement, about we're going to have to document when we see a sign go up and then start the clock running on that sign. You know, we had, you know, our staff running ragged everywhere across the city this timeframe. And hopefully, my manpower will be back up to where it should be on our next election. So.
Yeah, and I see a little bit differently than Councilman Ward. I have to tell you that I think if you put your signs where they don't belong, you deserve to lose them. I mean, that, that's kind of my position. I know they're expensive, but if somebody puts them out, or somebody puts them out for you, and they put them out in the wrong place, then you deserve to lose them. And yeah, I had some in the back of the truck, too. So I mean, I think we all did. Yeah. But anyway. Okay. Well, it's a great start. I mean, we know that we need to do things. And I'm particularly pleased about the feather flags because I have given bad info out. I did not think we allowed those. But anyway, we'll see how it goes. Councilman Fawcett.
With all the conversation we've had and the amount of information that everybody's looking for, I would think it would be hard to have a. looking for, I would think it would be hard to have a hearing on this publicly on the sixteenth, so are we gonna push that out, or what's gonna, what are we gonna do here? Because we, doesn't sound like we're gonna be ready to go.
Mayor Vice, Vice Mayor, members of council, I would say that we will not have the public hearing advertised for the sixteenth. I think there was a questions here and a couple items. The item that we talked about with the, of course, has been looked at by the attorney's office on, that we got from, I still call them TBA, which had dealt with the, the one item. Also, I've had some conversations with some of the other individuals that had called concerning those, and they were, they were more relative to having a public hearing and the input which you all talked about earlier, that we may have done a little bit better on our public information process, that was, I heard that. But we need to get back, I think, some good questions here tonight, I think we need to re-circle back with the attorney's office and review some of these issues again, and see where we go, I will take all the comments here that we saw and, and bring it back, but I would say it will not be on the sixteenth at this time. We will make sure that you have the full documents beforehand, before we bring it forth for the public hearing.
I think it's also wise not to do that right before the holiday, where people would think we're just pushing something through that, you know, probably deserves a lot more attention than that, so. All right, any other questions, comments, thoughts? All right, thank you very much. We next have a staff report, which is school facilities needs assessment and attendance zone plan update. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, since early 2020, the city and the public schools consultant, RRMM Architects, has been working with both staffs in development of the schools facilities needs assessment and attendance zone plan. Tonight's staff report will provide an overview of the work completed to date and set the stage for a future meeting in early 2021. It will not provide conclusions this evening or recommendations this evening, but will provide the background and the processes necessary for the future meeting discussions. At that time, conclusions and recommendations will be presented to both city council and the school board. It's my understanding that the school board will get a similar presentation, I think, next week, what you're gonna receive tonight. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Dwayne Harvard, President and CEO of RRMM Architects to the podium, who will provide the staff report for you.
Mayor Johnson, Vice Mayor Bennett, members of council, good evening. Pleased to be here to present you all with an update on the status of our presentation. As you've already heard, we're giving this presentation tonight, and the exact same presentation will be given to the school board on the tenth. Just a refresher on the purpose of this study, we're going to, we've already had a demographic analysis, so we're forecasting enrollment increases or decreases, we're assessing the condition, not of every school, some of your newest schools, we didn't need to assess, but eighteen of them, including nine elementaries, four middles, three high schools, and two specialty schools have been assessed. We also wanted to understand the vision and programmatic direction of Suffolk Public Schools, so we had some visioning sessions. We wanted to develop prioritization and of, and recommendations for addressing all the facility needs and doing that over a period of time, ultimately to have a, just a very good grasp of the future improvement needs and what they would cost, and a good game plan going forward. So what we've done so far, we have completed the demographic analysis, we've done all the condition assessments, and we've had some visioning sessions, and as stated, there, there won't be any recommendations or conclusions tonight, but we are close, so very excited about that. And our next steps, I'm gonna give you a little schedule overview in just here in a moment, but we're in the process of working on developing options, and we will have some study conclusions and recommendations very soon. That demographic analysis, looking backwards, the enrollment has actually decreased in the last ten years by one hundred and eighty-five students. We developed ten-year enrollment projections by school, by grade, and using historical enrollment and live birth counts as inputs. The enrollment projection was shown to increase from fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty-two to fourteen thousand six hundred and ninety-two in the first five years, and then in the second five years, up to fourteen thousand nine ninety-five, so it's about six hundred and seventy-three students, I believe, in the next ten years, which is, is not, is very moderate. The enrollment's fairly stable at most of the schools, it's projected to decline further at Lakeland High School and, and continue some growth at Nansman River High School. So those are just kind of the, the nuggets from the demographics. When we went into the condition assessments, we really tried to be very thorough and comprehensive. Mark Probst is here with me tonight, Mark was leading the charge for these condition assessments, and I really feel that you're getting a good value for what our contract includes, because each one of these schools is gonna have a very good condition assessment. We included the civil and site features, the interior and exterior architectural components, ADA, the building code, including some safety and security that we know from, from our experience with schools, roof assessments, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing assessments, as well as technology, structural assessments, we looked at fire suppression and also hazardous So we have a system of, of identifying and rating, ranking schools as a way to compare. We looked at the building systems and, and components, and for each of those, not just overall for the schools, but in, on the components, we had poor, fair, good, excellent, and so on, based on a number of factors. And we had what's called a deferred maintenance schedule, and those are the improvements that we identified as being needed, and when they would need to be improved, and how much they would cost. So, and those factors we looked at for the ratings, condition, age, estimated remaining useful life, maintenance, and so on, to kind of give them a ranking, and it helped to determine the priority for the recommended replacement, and a date and a cost for those. So what we develop is a facility condition rating calculation, and it's, the FCI is a facility condition index, and so how that's calculated is we take the deferred maintenance costs, and we use the most high priority deferred maintenance cost for that figure which occurs in the next three years, and then we divide that by what the actual value of the school is in terms of its replacement. And so if we were to take a hundred thousand square foot school that needed to be replacement, replaced, we would know the construction value of that based on square footage, and that would be our number that we would use in this, this facility condition index. Next. So to kind of bring those two together, we have a condition ranking ranging from poor, fair, good, excellent, I'll say that none of the schools were in the very poor, so you won't see that here anywhere. The FCI rating for excellent was, is zero to five percent, and that's really your newer schools, only normal scheduled maintenance is required. And then the good rating is five to ten, minor repairs needed, maybe some school function, the school generally functions as it's designed to, for fair, ten to twenty-five percent, and minor and major repairs needed both, and some functional challenges within the school. And then poor, between twenty-five and fifty percent, there's some major repairs needed, they have regular operational and functional challenges, and they may not meet all the building codes. Next. So there were five schools that got in the poor, they're, they're shown in the red X, and they are Forest Glen, John Yates, JFK, Middle, Elephant's Fork Elementary, and Kilby Shore's Elementary. All of these above thirty percent on the facility condition index. Nansman Parkway Elementary was kind of borderline, it was actually at twenty-five point eighty-eight percent, but there were a couple of things that, that we thought it should actually rank in the fair category, so those are the worst. Can you go next? What we found were the most common deficiencies, and the two most expensive here, shown in red, roof replacements, heating, ventilating, air conditioning systems, and then electrical upgrades, exterior skin improvements, and site improvements. But I have to say that, you know, the school division from our observations, and we, we see a lot of schools and, and what divisions do, they're, they're working hard to maintain the schools, but things do wear out, and we didn't really see observations of anything that looked like wasteful spending or neglect in, in our review. We did have visioning sessions with both the stakeholders from the city and the school division, we went through a series of four exercises, and I'll talk a little bit about each one of those, if you're next. First one was the vision for a successful graduate, and I won't read all of these, but if you consider just the skill sets, we're looking to create productive citizens and, you know, twenty-first century citizens that are good with technology and able to collaborate, they wanted them to be able to work in or out of a traditional school setting, and particularly with issues of the pandemic and the virtual learning, that's very important to be able to, to operate in both, both worlds. And just teaching kids how to be lifelong learners, you know, setting them in a place where they know how to do research, communicate, and then, and express themselves independently. Next. The next exercise was the role of the teacher, and some of the shared themes over on the right there, really transforming the, the classroom and working on teaching students how to be good team players and interact socially, communicate and collaborate in classrooms, creating a learning environment that promotes confidence. And looking at the teacher's role is still very, very important, but it is an evolving role, and so the teacher, instead of standing in front of the classroom, delivering content in traditional manner, teacher also has to be more or less of a coach and help students to learn how to do research and, and mentor them. Looked at capital renovation and construction priorities, and I, I think the school division would like to have some kind of specialty center related to vision, visual and performing arts, whether that be in an existing school or new school, and kind of getting their, their brand throughout as a central theme in their facilities. They identified a number of schools that really have needs, and they, they align pretty much with our list of poor schools. And then just making sure that they're looking at the, the near-term community needs when, when discussing facility actions. Next. Went through a whole exercise of standards for the redefined facility at each level, elementary, middle, and high, long list of, of things that were important. Next slide. And so some of the, the major bullets from that exercise, the all-in-one classrooms, really being able to have a classroom that can be reconfigured and is flexible, that promotes these new teaching methods that involve collaboration and teamwork, as well as independent learning, and the furnishings are very important to being able to do that, whether it be in a new school or an existing school, that flexibility is needed, and then thinking beyond the classroom, extension of the classroom to other areas within a facility. Next. So we're here presenting tonight, I mentioned the tenth, which we present to the school board, we have a steering committee meeting coming up on December the fourteenth, we're at a point now where we've collected the data we need to really come up with options, and so we're gonna start discussing those in that meeting, next. And so we, we've got the demographic data, we've got programmatic data, we've got facility condition assessments, we have, we're able to apply the vision of the school and the educational framework, we, we are aware of equity issues amongst the schools, the costs, and so we're open to wherever the data leads us, whether it be renovations or additions, consolidations, new schools, replacements, and of course, we've, we've covered all the just deferred maintenance that's gonna be required for these schools. But we, if you could step back for just one, we just really want to be able to identify the needs along with the capacity for funding of those needs, and have a data-driven solution that's a balanced solution in the end, so. And what we hope to do is, after that meeting, to have some level of consensus that we can bring to you all and the school board in a joint meeting sometime in January. So when we come back in January, we're gonna hear what all, both groups have to say, hopefully be able to refine and come up with some conclusions. One of the things that we want to have is, we have individual booklets for each of the schools for their specific needs, but we want to have an executive summary that's very easy for everybody to read and comprehend and not have to get down into the weeds so far, but really end up with a very high-quality set of documents that will guide you all the next ten years. And that's it for our study, there was one more slide, just to tell you that we are working on a housing yield analysis as an additional piece of work, and we're looking at some formulas for the school construction costs and school capacity for a level of services that will be an easy formula to follow that we can share with the local building industry and so forth, and get some, get some consensus and standard formula. And so that's all I have this evening, happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Any questions? Councilman Doolan?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few questions. I'd like to start with, there's a lot, in my opinion, there is a lot riding on what you come back with. I mean, this is a fairly expensive and supposed to be a fairly complete plan that you bring back to us, that is going to establish student generation rate based on development to have in the pipeline, projected future development, which will be based on what type of development that is to determine the student generation rate. You're telling us through this analysis initially that you're only projecting possibly six hundred more students over the next ten years. Now, is that based on actually looking at our numbers and what we have in the pipeline, what has been rezoned, and what is forecast to be built in the next ten years?
Sure, cooperative strategies is our demographer, and they could give you more detail on the actual demographic analysis, but that is my understanding that they have been a?
But the bottom line is, you know, we are projecting only six hundred more students in our public school system in the next ten years.
That's, that's what they have given us, yes, sir. Now, it doesn't mean that you won't need to revisit another demographic analysis for ten years, because things change that, that are not able to predict, but?
But this is reasonably speaking.
At this point in time, yes, sir, at this point in time, that's what's being projected.
I know things change, and ten years in the big scheme of things is really not very long, because, you know, we don't have a lot of funding for a bunch of schools until further out, I think a lot of those schools, I mean, you look at a new high school, they're gonna be out, so I don't, I don't know how we not get there, but I want to ensure to the best of our ability that we're not gonna be working with outdated information in the very near future, and I know this is gonna be a long-term strategic plan, but it needs to be a plan that will allow us, after speaking to the schools and see, and you spoke a lot about design of schools and interiors, and to be honest with you, I really didn't even know where that came from, because I don't think that's part of this study. I think it's?
Part of, part of our study was to meet with the school division and, and have visioning and understand what their programs were and included, so that, you know, when we look at facilities, we understand, you know, their, their side of the equation, so.
To the extent, as far as square footage for the type of activities they may want To the extent, as far as square footage for the type of activities they may want, or the size of the classrooms, or if they want certain audiovisual and how that's going to apply to that certain, you know, building, and I understand that, but, you know, I've actually got a copy of the RFP here, and, I mean, there's, it talks about school facilities' capacity and attendance boundaries. Consistent with study, school attendance zone plan and facility condition assessment, and it also talks about Suffolk Public School attended zone plans. So, I mean, I don't know what you're coming back with, but I'm looking for a couple of options personally. I'm not speaking for everybody else. One is based on the student generation rate, where that student generation is going to be, and then how we are best able to accommodate that student generation with our existing facilities, with or without an attendant zone change, if you will. So, with no rezoning using our existing facilities, we will be able to accommodate long-term, long-term, reasonably speaking, or this is how we'll be able to accommodate them. And then, once you look at the facilities, whether that's going to be by replacing a facility, enlarging a facility, remodeling a facility, or whatever you're going to do with it to make it work. And then, the other option would be with a redistricting option. If there's an attendant zone change, then this is how we would use the facilities to accommodate the student generation rate that you're saying that we're having. And then we can look at those with the dollar figures associated and see which one is most favorable. But what we need to have that I don't think we have had in the past is a long-term strategic plan regardless of the cost that can be prioritized by our school system, and then we can make an honest effort to fund those requirements in the prioritization that they give us, and then that in turn could be, you know, reviewed each year. So, I'm just, I'm a little skeptical that we're going to get back, at least from my standpoint, what I think we need to have. So, I'm cautiously optimistic.
I assure you that we are going to come back with numerous options that this committee will be able to review and make a very informed decision based on all the costs, the conditions of these schools, the growth, where the growth occurs, all those things.
And I got one other thing. Everybody knows I'm crazy about this energy performance contracting that we didn't do any of. And I assume that you're familiar with this state program and the energy performance contract where you can do certain upgrades through qualified contractors with a guaranteed return for debt service based on the energy savings. So, a lot of the facilities that you're telling me, you know, we're talking about HVAC and some of those other things, which obviously HVAC is one of those things that are covered under the energy performance plan. However, they have a very, very small return on investment. It's a 20, 30-year payback on that. So, I was just wondering whether your firm is using the information that we paid for from Trane. I think we spent $275,000 for an energy performance analysis, and I would assume you have that, so you could refer back to it as you formulate your plans in the event that we are remodeling or refurbishing a facility to try to incorporate some of those savings at the same time because they had identified up to $12 million at one point. So, I'm not saying it's all of it, but I just want to ensure that this plan comes back as, as far as I'm concerned, there's a lot hinging on it.
Point number...
Anyhow, I'm done.
I have a question, which kind of goes along with what Councilman Dooman said. Where you have the housing yield analysis, am I incorrect that that's what you're doing with the, what we have in the pipeline and all that, what the housing yield will be? Because the 600 to me, I mean, the 600 to me sounds like maybe it could not possibly include all of that. Maybe I'm wrong, but, you know, I'm just, I'm a little skeptical that...
The yield analysis is to give you formulas that will tell you what, how many students come from certain types of housing.
Right. And we know we have a lot in the pipeline that we know are certain types. So, from that, I'm assuming we could come up with the number of students that those... But is that the 600, I guess, is the question?
The six, they're kind of independent of one another. These were, to determine the housing yield analysis types was, I think, separate for part of the...
The formula and...
Yes, the formula.
I understand, okay.
And so, the demographics had already evaluated based on existing and projected growth or developments, what the new numbers would be, enrollment numbers.
Okay. And the other piece was when you were talking about the, you know, the needs of the school. I'm assuming when you're talking about remodeling a school or replacing or whatever you're talking about, you would compare if we took John F. Kennedy and we took Colonel Fred Cherry. There are a lot of ways that education is being done in Colonel Fred Cherry in open areas and well-lit areas and different types of seating, all those things, which you could not necessarily reproduce. So, I'm assuming that's what you're talking about when you're talking about those different ways, what we were talking about, the ways of building the school or changing the school and to get the best type of education you could get.
Yeah. I think if we were to have an option where we were looking at a total modernization of one of the schools, then we would want to have some equity and parity amongst what has recently been built.
That's what I was, right.
So, to understand what has been the new norm and overlay that on the existing, then I think that's essential information. And likewise, if we were going to propose as one option to replace a school, we wouldn't want to look at just the existing school. We'd want to look at a newer school that may be another Bowser, if you had a new elementary, for example.
Mr....
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilman Johnson?
And we're also looking at the need for new schools, the future needs. That hasn't been discussed at this point yet, but at some point, you'll come back to us and say, this is where we project that you will probably need to build a school for that market area. But I'm referring mainly to northern Suffolk because it's, we are really lax in that area as far as school locations. Our high schools are all in the south, but yet, the growth will very likely be in the north. And that'll be part of this study when it comes back to us. This is what we forecast you'll need to put there in 10 years. And my other question, not a question, but when you're assessing the schools that are in dire needs, you know, you have five schools that are really, really bad, and, but you're recommending that we renovate three of those schools, the other two there's no recommendation for.
I'm not recommending...
No, but I'm saying that's what came out in the report. As, you know, the Forest Glen, John Yates, JFK, Elephant Fork, Kilby Shores were the ones in dire needs. But yet, of those, only JFK, Elephant Fork, and Kilby Shores, you said need to be renovated or changed, or the other two...
What we did, we ranked the schools, and I mentioned that these five schools are in the poorer category.
Right.
Now, whether we, whether you renovate them or renovation addition or replacement, we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
We just know that they're in this poor condition, and there's a certain amount of work that needs to be done on these schools, and there's a cost associated with that. So, you have to evaluate at some point, you know, is it worth the renovation cost to bring this school up to par? And so, that's part of the whole option.
That's what you'll come back to us with. That's what I'd like to see.
And it's a very complicated kind of mix because you're right, you have concentrations of people, even though you're only showing 673 over the next 10 years, you have concentrations of growth that impact a particular school in a district as opposed to maybe another school that doesn't have any growth in it, and the condition of the school, the growth around the school, there's all kinds of factors that have to be plugged in. And so, we will have, we have a lot of options to consider.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Goldberg.
I'm joining that. I agree with just about everything that's been talked about tonight, but I have a concern on the, sort of the expansion of our growth in our city. We know we're going to have it. I'm interested in the, what y'all come up with far as the rezoning of areas that could be rezoned so we can meet. The growth of 600 over the next five or 10 years is nothing compared to other cities that I've been associated with. I've seen massive growth. So, that doesn't worry me or scare me in any way, that type of growth, that number. But I would expect that we're going to see more of that because we have an expanding city. We have people that want to come and grow, and we are, would anticipate that we would expand our area where growth can come with the addition of new water lines and sewer lines. I mean, there was a time in which we were expecting to be a city of maybe 50,000 homes, and I guess we have somewhere around 28,000, 29,000. So, there's a big growth area there that's coming, and I'm wondering about the rezoning and how we handle that growth and where we put the new schools, if we have new schools, or how we fix the schools on that end. So, that's where I'm coming from. I don't disagree with anything that's been said tonight about the request, and appreciate what you're doing. Go deep into it because I think it's a, as Councilman Dooman has said, it's a serious moment in time for our growth and where we want to be, and it's going to guide us for a number of years from now on. So, it's important what y'all come up with. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Councilman Fawcett.
Just a couple of things. Thanks for your report tonight, for sure. Yes, there has been a lot of good talk here. And, you know, some of our issues that I'm hoping that'll be addressed is, you know, it's, yes, it's a boundary problem. Where are the most students really at, and what do we do to fix some of this disparity because it has an adverse effect on our building community to where we can allow these developers to come and build based on the number of students that are coming? So, for instance, you know, somebody's talked about a high school on the north end. Well, do we look at building a high school? Maybe part of this in your program, I'm not sure if that's going to be part of it, or would we take an existing high school, and if it's got the bones to be able to do it, could we upgrade that school to accommodate that number growth? Because, you know, the numbers are all over the place. There may be more on certain ends of the south end, and there's a whole lot on the north end. I mean, we have northern shores, it's pretty well peaked out. How do we address that? I mean, let's be realistic, you know, it would be nice if we could build six new schools, but I don't think we can come up with $350 million to do that, you know. So, I would just say, I hope this report hones it down to a point where, as Councilman Dooman and the rest of us have said, is to get it down to refining it, to take us, you know, you put in a 10-year plan, but each year, how are we going to get to that particular point? And what do we think that generation's going to be needed, and where do we think we're going to need to concentrate the most effort? Because the school's been doing a fairly good job, but we've, we know some of the schools have got condition issues. We know that. You know, we've been pumping money in our budget every year to handle some of the HVAC system problems and some of the maintenance problems they have, which is never enough because things are pretty expensive, we all know. But I'm just hoping that this whole thing will encompass all those areas that we're looking at. And, you know, Florence Bowser is probably one of the nicest schools I've seen designed in a long time. I will say that, and I think y'all were behind that. So, you know, those students that go there are thrilled to death with the outline and the layout of that school. So, that's just something we need to build off of and look at as we go. But I appreciate your time and all the council members' comments here, and I think the mayor has, Vice Mayor has some comments.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. Also, I'm just concerned that really, with knowing the city like I do and the number of houses and apartments that's being built, it seems like that 600 is a very low number. Again, just look though, for 10 years, I mean, that's really, even though I know it's 185, I think that was, is less than it were a few years ago. So, but I think with the growth that we are having, and we're going to have more than 600 during, that's my personal belief. The other thing that I have a concern with is locations of schools. That's going to be a big key to, when your recommendation, I know you're going, you all supposed to come back with some priorities, one, two, and three, what you think is the worst schools and the worst needs and whatever the case might be, then we all have to look at how we're going to try to fund those schools and try to do the improvements. But I know that we need to look at where the growth is and where the schools are going. And we don't need to build a school like right now. We have some schools that have extra seats because they're in the wrong location. So, we have to know that the location is to serve all the students, not just one geographic population. And that's one of my big concerns, is how we're going to build schools and put it where it's going to serve the entire population, not just by zip codes. So, I have a big concern with that to make sure that we are on task with looking at the city, the way the population is and the growth. So, I appreciate your work that you have done so far, and I understand you, this is an overview, and you haven't prioritized anything, but it's going to be big bucks when it come back. That's really why we definitely need to know where we're going to start and where we're going to end. And I appreciate everything you have brought forward to us.
Looking forward to presenting to you all in January. I think you'll be pleased with what we have to show you.
Other questions?
Wait, thank you.
Councilman Goldberg? No. And I'd just like to say too, that as you do move forward, and I'll be sitting out there in January, so I'll be coming up to the podium to talk to you all. And, yeah, I hope that when we go through this process, and I'm sure it's a part of your, what your plan is, is that to make sure that the children get the same parity of education and the same type of environment, whether they're in the east, the south, the north, the west, it doesn't really matter. Every student of Suffolk should get that same parity of education, and I think that's an underlying premise to it. Anyone else? We thank you very much.
That concludes our staff reports. We have a motion to cancel the January 6, 2021 city council meeting. A motion is in order.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. We next have a motion to schedule the oath of office ceremony and reorganizational meeting for January 4, 2021 at 1:00 p.m. A motion is in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Second.
Councilman Dooman, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We next have a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, December 16, 2020 at 4:00 p.m., unless canceled.
The move?
All right.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. We'll next move to non-agenda speakers. Do we have any this evening?
Yes, Mayor Johnson. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "non-agenda speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Alfonso Cargill, 105 Brown Lane, representing the Oakland Chukatac Civic League Regarding Road and Utility Infrastructure.
Come forward, please.
Sure. My name is Alfonso Cargill. I've been a citizen of Suffolk for 63 years. And during that time, I've seen a lot of changes, and I hope to see a lot more. But my primary concern... But my primary concern for the Civic League of Chuckituck is quite simple. We are having quite a few problems with our roads, especially Everett's Road, Moor Farm Lane, sections of Route 10. Now, I know the water and sewer line impacts the intersection of Everett's and Route 10, or Gotham Boulevard, if you prefer. But that has nothing to do with the condition of Everett's Road from the intersection up to Autobahn Road. We have tons of dump trucks that go to both the sand pits, Autobahn and the Turner Sand Pit. And I have done a personal count of the number of trucks and the damage that they do to our highways. Number one, during the course of a legitimate day, and when I say a legitimate day, that is fair, eight hours, 320 loads are hauling out of those sand pits. That's an average a day. If you, and I'm sorry, 40 loads an hour come out. That's a lot of dump trucks, to and fro. And like I said, during the course of an eight-hour day, you got 320 loads coming out of those two sand pits. From 10 to Autobahn, you got holes in the road, pavement is cracking, if you look on the shoulder. And all of this may not be from the heavy loads that those dump trucks are hauling. Part of it is from all of the water that the subdivision ran down the street, and if you get down there near it, you can see that the road has sunk. The shoulder is up here, and the road is down there. These are things that need to be addressed, and as far as Moor Farm goes, Moor Farm is ridiculous. We've had trucks that turn over there, we've had people who almost got wrecked there, and something needs to be done, or somebody's going to get killed on it. It's a very dangerous road. When Moor Farm was done, when Everett's Road was done, they were not made to handle that type of traffic. Those roads need to be upgraded so that they can handle that particular type of traffic. And if something isn't done, we're going to have more roads sinking, and we're going to have more flooding. We've seen it, like I said, I've been in Chuckituck for 63 years. Up until this year, I have never seen Autobahn Road underwater this deep. But that's becoming a regular occurrence. And as we keep getting these torrential rains, they're only going to get worse. Water runs under the highway infrastructure, and when you put these heavy loads on them, the asphalt breaks down. The other issue that I have is we're having a lot of houses built, and one of the things that I wish somebody in the city's right-of-way department would tell people is that when you have an easement, it does not transfer with the land. An easement is not land. An easement is simply a right. And as such, you can't transfer my right to allow somebody to go across my property simply because I gave you the right to go across. And this is an incident that we're having quite a bit of. And the other thing that we would like to see addressed is the fact that all of us in here had our property surveyed at one time or another because it's a requirement of the city. When you have your property surveyed and you have a survey and a plat recorded, nobody has the right to come out there and move your pins.
That concludes the time allotted, Mayor.
Okay.
That's our only speaker. Okay. Sir, would you like to finish your thought?
Yes. What I was saying, nobody has the right to move your pin because that's what you bought and paid for. You paid taxes on it 50, 60 years. And if you're going to have it resurveyed, it's much more accurate with a laser distance than it was when we were surveying with a steel chain or a tape. So instead of saying, oh, I want over here, you should honor the pins that are there and not deliberately try to take somebody else's property because you need it. I thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our speakers. All right, do we, I don't think we have any additions to tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in council that has anything to bring forward? Councilman Dooman?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of issues under new business. One, to start with, I think I'd like to make a motion to schedule a special meeting on December 9 for the purpose of discussion and interviewing candidates for the position of city assessor.
Second.
You have a time?
At noon, I'm sorry, at noon.
Need a second for that? Second. Oh, we've already got a second, all right.
Motion in a second? Would you like to call the roll?
Councilmember Dooman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay.
One other motion, my other motion pertains to addressing the process to fill the vacant Chuckituck City Council seat that will be created in January. And I'd like to start with letting everyone know that I did speak to Councilman-elect Laertis Williams in regards to this process, and he also agrees with it, so we can get in all his heart since he'll be instrumental in the decision process. So my motion would be to move to fill the vacant upcoming vacant Chuckituck City Council seat through an application process, with all applications received by December 31, 2020. And just for discussion purposes, I mean, the statute says it needs to be filled within 60 days of the vacancy, and then it will be decided by majority vote of council. And if this motion passes, I request, I'd like to ask the city attorney to further explain the notification and application process in further detail.
Move. Second.
Yeah, the motion is to fill the vacant upcoming Chuckituck City Council seat through an application process with all applications received by December 31, 2020.
Okay. So Councilmember Fawcett, you're seconding that. Great, thank you.
We have a motion in a second? Okay. I'm not sure what we're doing, because I didn't think you could fill a seat till it was empty, but anyway.
We're not going.
Go ahead. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Dooman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
I could ask the city attorney to explain the notification and application process, and it actually won't be determined until in January or February.
What has been presented is an appointment to serve as a council member to represent the Chuckituck Borough through an application process. The application will be on the city's website. You would go to the city's website at www.suffolkva.us. On that website will be a link that will allow persons who are residents of the Chuckituck Borough to submit their application for consideration by the council after the January 1 date. It will give the eligibility, it will be electronically, the ability to electronically file it as well as actually print it off so it could be mailed to the clerk's office. The clerk's office information will be provided. The clerk is also willing to answer any questions a person might have, if they have any technical difficulties, she can direct them to the appropriate persons. So as for tonight, we're announcing that the application would be available starting on this Friday, December the 4th. However, I do understand that a more robust explanation of how everything will work and availability will be given at our next meeting. But anyone who is interested, who lives in the Chuckituck Borough, can go to the website, complete the application, and only after the vacancy is official will those applications be reviewed by the council. The council has 60 days from January 1 to actually by majority vote appoint a person that will serve only the remaining two years of the term, and an election for that particular borough, be it the Chuckituck Borough, would occur in the November 2022 general election. If you have any other questions, please, you're welcome to ask me at this time. Again, all this information will be available on the city's website. There'll be various links in which you can get the application to submit, as well as attach a resume to it for consideration.
Question, can they do that before January?
They're saying, starting Friday.
The code does not say anything about when the person, the whole process of filling. It just says that it has to be filled at, after the process, after the vacancy occurs. The vacancy occurs in that position on January 1 of 2021. There is no current vacancy at this time.
If I may, I can add a little bit more detail to the location of the applications when they get on the website. If you would like me to share that now, I would be happy to. It will be, go to, as the city attorney said, you'll go to the city website, www.suffolkva.us. It'll be under, on the front webpage, it'll be under spotlights, or spotlight's area. Also, if you go to the government, do dropdown to council, it'll be right there also. If you go to the calendar, you can find it on the calendar. So there's going to be various areas on the webpage it'll be. It'll also be links on all of our different social media outlets, too, is my understanding. So there'll be very different ways, and there's two different types of forms, depending on your level and how you would like, your technology level, I'll put it that way. Someone like me is going to probably go to the straight PDF file and drop it and fill it out. But we have a more interactive one, too. So it doesn't matter which is, based on your ability, your technology ability, you can download the form, too, fill it out, and mail it in to the city clerk's office, and we'll be advertising that or details on that on the website. So we've set it up, staff has set it up, I'll leave it to the more talented tech folks. They've set it up various different ways that someone who's interested, has an interest, can fill out and attach a resume, either just submit it in on the website, or into the link, or just, they could download it and mail it in, too. It's probably easier or more efficient if they have the ability to just use the link and attach a resume if they'd like to that, and just click it and send it in. But the staff has done a very good job in trying to organize this based on the questions and the information provided by the city attorney's office.
Mayor, might I add to, more to your point, the selection must take place by those who are sitting in the seat on January 1. So the only thing that will happen will be, these applications will be in possession of those who are sitting on January 1. They can further discuss how they want it to do, and I think Mr. Dooman mentioned that he had already talked to Councilman-elect Williams in regards to if this process was acceptable to him. But we want to make sure everyone knows that the only people that will be voting in regards to the person that will be appointed to that seat will be those who are sitting as of January 1, and that will not be the meeting, the first meeting that we will have to even discuss this, will be the second meeting in January, because the first meeting is specifically set for organization and investiture, so that topic could not be discussed.
All right. Any other business items? If not, we'll turn to our announcements and comments, and we'll ask our media and committee relations director, Diana Klink, to come forward for announcements.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. As we know, the Suffolk Economic Development Department, with the assistance of multiple city departments, recently unveiled a new downtown Suffolk branding initiative to further enhance and bring awareness to this important corridor. The new brand and tagline are one aspect of the overall downtown master plan, which includes a variety of marketing and infrastructure projects that enhance and promote downtown Suffolk. Implementation of the plan has been a collaborative effort with the downtown Suffolk business community, with input from guests and stakeholders. The public can expect to see new downtown designs in arenas such as websites, social media decals, and banners in the coming days. Congratulations to Christine Stamen, paralegal administrator with the city attorney's office, for receiving a 2020 Unsung Legal Heroes Award from Virginia Lawyers Weekly. This program recognizes the Old Dominion's most talented and dedicated legal support professionals. The award honors law firm employees, other than lawyers, who have consistently gone above and beyond the call of duty, often behind the scenes. Stamen, who has been with the city of Suffolk for 13 years, was nominated by city attorney Helavie Holland for her work in leading the support staff for the office during these COVID times. Stamen worked to create the ability to work from home while juggling battling cancer and maintaining her productivity. She has since returned to the office and continues her work as an unsung local hero, local legal hero. The Suffolk Fire and Rescue Department welcomed 10 new firefighters to their ranks following a commencement and badge-pinning ceremony held on Thursday, November 19, at Kings Fork High School's auditorium. The graduates came from the Hampton Roads Recruit Fire Academy Class 22, which was a joint academy between Suffolk Fire and Rescue and Portsmouth Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Medical Services. Class 22 chose the name Hot Shots and included a total of 26 men and women who graduated following intensive state-certified basic recruit training, combined with grueling physical training that began in November 2019. 10 of these members have already reported to various fire stations across the city of Suffolk. The results of the American Heart Association 2020 Workplace Health Achievement Index were recently announced, and the city of Suffolk achieved national silver legal, excuse me, silver level recognition for taking significant steps to build a culture of health in the workplace. The city's employee wellness program began in 2010 and has progressively led to an increasingly health-conscious workforce, resulting in positive trends amongst multiple chronic conditions. The city of Suffolk, in partnership with the Western Tidewater Health District, will be providing a free community COVID-19 testing event tomorrow, Thursday, December 3, at the Health and Human Services Building parking lot located at 135 Hall Avenue from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. or until tests run out. Testing is for any individual, including children, who comes to the testing site on a first-come, first-served basis. Residents who wish to be tested are encouraged to either drive up to the testing site or to walk up directly. All testing offered at these locations is free. Social distancing and the walk-up portion of the facility will be required, and in accordance with the recent expansion of Governor Ralph Northam's mask mandate, the wearing of face masks for those over the age of five is also required. With the holiday countdown on, maybe you've got some major holiday shopping scheduled for this weekend. If so, you can make a big difference in the lives of children in the Suffolk area by taking the time to participate in the Suffolk Police Department's Stuff the Police Car event to be held Saturday, December 5, at two locations in Suffolk. Suffolk Police will provide a police vehicle and volunteer officers at the Walmart located at 1200 North Main Street, as well as the Walmart at 6259 College Drive. This will take place from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., again, this Saturday. This will take place from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. again this Saturday. Social distancing of at least six feet will be required. Please bring a mask for each person in your party to be used anytime social distancing of at least six feet cannot be maintained. The goal is to collect as many new and unrammed toys as possible, which will then be turned over to Toys for Tots. Help your community have a happy holiday season as part of the Suffolk Police Department's Stuff the Police Car event. As a reminder, you can support local farms, crafters, and artisans at the Suffolk Holiday Gift Market, a seasonal twist on the traditional Suffolk Farmers Market, this Saturday, December 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The Suffolk Division of Tourism event will showcase over 25 vendors, offering a variety of items. You can also enjoy festive carols by the Doorway Singers from 11:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m., and Jesse Lou's food truck will be onsite until 2:00 p.m. Admission is, of course, free and open to the public. Suffolk Parks and Rec is pleased to offer COVID-19 safe alternatives to several of their very popular holiday events. Drive through the Recreation Center parking lots on designated dates and times while you and your family are dressed in your favorite holiday pajamas to receive a few, a free holiday bag. As you cruise through, staff will safely welcome you with social distancing and will provide a variety of holiday goodies while supplies last. You have three opportunities to drive through in December. On Saturday, December 5th, at the Northern Shores Recreation Center. Saturday, December 12th, at the East Suffolk Rec Center. And on Saturday, December 19th, at the Wayleyville Recreation Center. All three of these drive-through days will be from 11:00 a.m. until noon. Participants should stay in your vehicles. Social distancing of at least six feet will be required, and of course, again, please bring a mask for each person in your party. Suffolk Parks and Rec is also hosting a Here Comes Santa for Seniors drive-through holiday parade for senior center members and active adults from the community. Those 55 and older are invited to cruise through while wearing your favorite Seasons Greetings attire. As you cruise by the Recreation Center, staff will safely welcome you with holiday cheer and a surprise. Free registration is required. The Here Comes Santa for Seniors events will take place on Wednesday, December 9th, at the East Suffolk Recreation Center from 10:00 to noon, and the Wayleyville Recreation Center from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Register for the site you would like to drive through. And again, we're following all COVID-19 requirements at those events as well. In order to provide expanded technology access to the Suffolk community, the Suffolk Public Library and Suffolk Parks and Rec will offer access to computers, printing, and other technology, and designated libraries and recreation centers beginning Monday, December 14th. East Suffolk and Wayleyville Rec Center Computer Labs will be open from 6:00 a.m. to noon and 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Mondays through Fridays, and from 8:00 a.m. to noon on Saturdays. Masks must be worn when entering Rec Centers and while using the computer labs. All customers will be asked health screening questions regarding COVID-19 symptoms, and a temporal no-touch body temperature scans will also be taken. A maximum of two customers will be allowed in the computer labs at any time. Computer use will be limited to one hour per customer, and customers must register at the Recreation Center front desk for computer use. Customers may be required to wait to enter the facility during peak times. All customers will be required to maintain six feet of social distancing while inside the computer labs. The East Suffolk and Wayleyville Recreation Center Computer Labs are available for use with the annual Recreation Center memberships. Also, Morgan Memorial and the North Suffolk Library will be open for technology use from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Fridays, and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. In order to maintain a safe socially-distanced environment, everybody will need to check in with staff when entering. Face coverings will be required to enter any facility, as well as the completion of a multi-question health assessment. Access will be restricted to one hour for the use of technology, with other areas of the buildings remaining closed and inaccessible. In order to meet demands for technology access while maintaining social distancing in the library, Kindle Fire tablets will be available for checkout and home use for up to three weeks with a library account. In addition to the Kindle Fire tablets, laptops are also available to be checked out for four hours for use on library property. All of these items, in addition to the Wi-Fi to-go mobile hotspots, may be requested by using curbside pickup service at the Morgan Memorial Library and North Suffolk Library. Laptops are available on a first-come, first-served basis and cannot be placed on hold in advance. Printing of documents is also available through curbside service for no-contact pickup. To utilize curbside pickup service, library cardholders must place holds in advance and wait to receive a text, email, or phone call notification before coming to the library. Once at the library, customers can drive or walk up to one of the designated spots and call the library. Library staff will bring items out and place them on a table, and then indicate when the customer can approach the table to retrieve their items. All items returned to the library go through a very strenuous quarantine period prior to being returned to circulation. Library cardholders can place items on hold through their account online or by calling the library. People can also sign up for a free library card online through the library's website for immediate access to digital content and to place holds on print materials. For more information, of course, we've included very extensive information here, but for any further questions, they can contact the East Suffolk Recreation Center at (514)4500, or for the Wayleyville Rec Center at (514)7100. Suffolk City Treasurer Ron Williams would like to thank more than 800 citizens of Suffolk who made his office's recent virtual unclaimed property event a success, as over $80,000 worth of unclaimed funds were found to be returned to those in the Suffolk community. If you missed the event, you can search anytime at www.vamoneysearch.org. Next year's virtual event will take place November 16th and 17th. Massimo Zanetti Beverage USA is celebrating their expansion announcement in Suffolk with an electronic message. Working with the Suffolk Economic Development Department, the global coffee producer is participating in a media promotion highlighting the vital contributions that they have made to Suffolk, the port of Virginia, and the state's economy. The video features an online groundbreaking of sorts via a virtual toast to the recent Massimo Zanetti Beverage USA announcement to build a new state-of-the-art distribution center in Suffolk's Virginia Port Logistics Park. The video will be shared with regional and national outlets as a means to stimulate awareness and excitement for Suffolk's strength as Virginia's caffeine capital. Let's take a look at that video now.
On behalf of the port of Virginia, I'd like to congratulate Massimo Zanetti for their new state-of-the-art facility in Suffolk.
Massimo Zanetti's Beverage USA's new distribution center in Suffolk will expand their efficiency and already outstanding customer satisfaction.
Suffolk, we still love you as the peanut capital, but we're also now tipping our load to the nickname you've earned as Virginia's Coffee and Tea Capital.
You just can't find a better, more committed workforce and quality of life than we have right here. So to Suffolk, I say thank you for more than 30 years of working together.
We raise our cups to toast their expansion in Suffolk.
The food and beverage industry has long storied roots in Suffolk and the Commonwealth, and we are proud this tradition will continue for generations to come. So thank you again, and you all have a great and wonderful day.
Here's to the caffeine capital. As we leave you this evening, for the latest information on COVID, you can visit the city's website or follow us on Facebook and Twitter. And after that, I say good evening. Thank you very much. We'll start with our comments this evening. Not sure where we started last time, so, Councilman Johnson.
That's good. I'm going to be very brief. Happy holidays to everyone in the city. We've got a wonderful month coming up. Enjoy your family, enjoy being home. It's not so bad. I'd like to just take one moment to congratulate our two new, 10 new firefighters. It's so wonderful always to see all these new faces come into our city and make, they make the job even better. And I'd also just like to take a moment to thank our fire rescue police. They do an outstanding job for us every day. We're very fortunate to have such a great group of women. Thank you.
Councilman Ward.
Yes, I wish everybody had a great Thanksgiving. I just want to get some recognition right now. As you know, we elected the oldest Williams, they called him the Turkey Man, and every year he put on a turkey giveaway, and he went beyond himself this year because for the COVID, and I had talked to him earlier, I said, what, how you planning to do it this year? And he said, he already got the plan, and it worked out perfect. I mean, everything went well, people still talking about it, how he done it, and I'd like to give him all my congratulations, man, well-done job. Thank you so much, but I'll say God bless.
Councilman Doeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to piggyback on what Councilman Ward said. I want to thank ladies for another tremendous turkey giveaway. I think it was actually went smoother than standing in line. I mean, we had two lines of cars, and, you know, they blew through pretty quick. It was well organized. I want to thank the Sheriff's Department because they really stepped up to the plate this year with traffic control. We had hundreds of cars that were lined up, and it was much more, much, much more involved than it normally was. It was very smooth, there weren't any safety issues, and just a well-run event as it, as it always is. I too want to welcome our new firefighters. I also want to thank Al Cargill and some of my Chukutuk Civic League folks around there, Mr. Porter and Kitty, and I can't see who's on the back over there. And a lot of these issues, we've been talking about for years, and of course, we have a lot going on in Chukutuk with the development behind Oakland Elementary School and the other activities that are being done, you know, moving dirt, you know, from, you know, creating the problem on Autobahn Road in Crittenton, and then with the development drainage issues. So I'd just like to mention to the city manager, if you could just have staff kind of take a look at Everett Road and check the immediate issues, if there are any potholes and that sort of thing, and then I think the prudent thing to do would be to wait until construction is finished on the property behind Oakland, so we can take a look at the road condition for some, maybe some more permanent fixes. And also, and of course, the conversation in our last civic meeting, we talked about, some folks asked about the feasibility or process to hook up to the sewer that's being provided by the contractor, and what that process would be, if you wouldn't mind just, you know, commenting on that?
Yes, for the extension of sewer, of course, the city has a petition process. You know, first step is for residents of interest, who have an interest, to write a letter with, sign with several of those who have an interest, and send it to the Director of Public Utilities, be Paul Rattell, this time. They then would take a look into a formal petition process once they set up a service area to see if the improved properties are interested in that area, and it requires 51% of the petitions to be returned, two-thirds of them returned to be in favor. At that point, it would be looked at to be put in the capital plan and then eventually construct it. So the big key is, is to reach out to Public Utilities, (514)7001, that's the administration office, and ask to speak with the Director on a potential petition process. That would be the easiest method to go about us looking at utilities for that area. And of course, with that development we were talking about, we, there was a, with the water main going in and the sewer force main set the backbone for the potential out there. There is those who are individual, they could connect to the sewer force main if they wanted to invest in a grinder pump. But I would say, if there's more than one, then we're looking at a petition process to see if that's the appropriate way to go.
Even without the petition process, would you say if an individual wanted to go through the expense of a grinder pipe, they could possibly tie into that main?
If they were abutting that main, if they were adjacent to that main, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. And with that, my quote of the night is from Lou Holtz, who any football fans probably don't, doesn't need any introduction there, but he's a motivational speaker, football coach, coached at Notre Dame for a long time, and that quote is, "Ability is what you are capable of doing. Motivation determines what you do, and attitude determines how well you do it." And with that, I'll say good evening.
Councilman Milteer.
I want to wish everybody a happy holiday season, and may we continue to work together, and may there be peace on earth and goodwill among all men.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Driver Village on Saturday night had a Christmas event. It was very crowded, a lot of people showed up for it. Also, I'd like to comment on the Sleepy Hole holiday lights in the Sleepy Hole Park. I had a chance to go through there, and it's great. Lot of comments, and people really excited about year, next year, to see how it grows. And, you know, there's been a lot of traffic out there. I don't know if they've been keeping count, car count, I think they probably might have, I don't know. But there's been a large amount out there. And I had a chance also, I want to congratulate our 10 firefighters, I had a chance to, because we didn't get to go to it this year, I got to watch it on YouTube, it was live-streamed. They did a phenomenal job, along with media, I think Diana, I think y'all worked on the media side of it to do the YouTube livestream, and it worked out great. I got to tell you, it was great to sit at home and watch it, not as good as being there, but whatever. So congratulations to all those firefighters, and for the fire department staff and the city staff for making it successful for all of them. Christina Stamen, thank Hellebuy for recognizing her and giving, getting her that award. And Thanksgiving, I hope everybody had a safe one, but to the Otis that was out there and pumped out 1,000 turkeys or so out there, to all of the great folks that were lined up for it, quite a humanitarian thing, and I'm sure they had a good meal based on what you had provided. So I want to thank you for doing that. Also, we had a good, I had a good friend in my neighborhood that was one of our ruetons. He actually passed on yesterday, and it breaks my heart to see what happened with him, but this is why you need to be wearing these as much as you possibly can. He didn't, he didn't make it long, started on Saturday, and here we are. So I want to send condolences to his family and to all the ruetons to help support his family along the way. I do know Lou Holtz, I had a chance to meet him at a prayer breakfast in Scope several years ago. Awesome guy to listen to, he was incredible. Along with that, everybody stay safe. Thank you very much for a good evening, and we'll see you back on the 16th.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to bring up the fact that there has been a significant number of shootings taking place in our city. We've had an uptick maybe in some way and, and things, it really bothers me, and I pass it on to the citizens that are listening. If you see something, say something, please. Make a telephone call. If you know of, hear of something, please give them a call. Police will respond as quickly as possible on that. Also, this is, you know, holiday season, please lock your cars, don't leave anything of value in them. What you can do, you know, watch your neighborhood and help your friends out when packages are delivered to their homes, they, sometimes they do get stolen, and I ask you to please be careful with that. Let's make it a nice holiday, let's have an enjoyable holiday. I think we have a lot to look forward to coming up, and I'd like to have everyone be, being available and be here, and as Councilman Fawcett has said, wear your mask, please wear your mask. I have lost numerous friends to the COVID, and it is, it's very uncomfortable when you get that telephone call from your friend or your neighbor telling you about that. So do be careful, and I thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start out as well saying hellebuy to Christine, congratulations to her on her accomplishments, and that's great for you recognizing her and nominating her, so I congratulate the two of you. Also, Mr. Leodis, again, you know, you've been doing that for a long time, and great job again, and that's my first day of hunting, so I didn't come out there to visit with you, because that was my first day of hunting season, so I usually try to take that in, so that's the reason why I wasn't able to stop by there. But also, on the, that same week, East End Baptist Church as well, they gave away turkeys as well, the church did, and I think we did about 150 or better families, and also Bishop Hall, he and the other ministers, I think, did a great, big job out there at the park behind Kroger's, and they had a great turnout, I was told from that, so. It's good when times like these, people need a lot of help, and people are stepping up to the plate to try and help people that's in need, so I cannot say enough about people that's doing that to help the citizens of Suffolk and the surrounding areas. Also, I would just like to commend Ms. Skinner. Also, I would just like to commend Ms. Skinner. You know, she have only been acting assessor for a month now, and she have given us two great reports on what is taking place in that office, and I wanted to make sure that she understand, I do appreciate Mr. Manager, somebody whoever can give her the information that, I really do appreciate the information. We have gotten more information here in the last two months than we have in years, so I think she has really stepped to the plate and have done a great job. I just wanted to commend her on that as well. And the 10 new firefighters, I congratulate them as well, and usually, as stated, we all are usually there to see the pendant, but with the things the way they are, we are missing a lot of visitation and things that we normally would do. The police department stuffing the cars, they always do that, but a call for rain this coming Saturday, so I'm hoping that that doesn't affect them with what they are trying to do, but if you can, please support them as well. And with that, I thank God for a safe Thanksgiving, and the family was able to do Zoom. We did not get together, we was all in our separate homes, and what we did, fellowship with each other through Zoom, and I hope that everyone has stayed safe and tried to listen to what the scientists and all are saying, look like we might be coming up with a virus, I meant with a vaccine, so I'm hoping that that will be something that will help save lives. Because really, if you look at the news every day, the numbers will continue to go up, 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 and up, and it hurts when you hear of people that you know, a family member that has really been affected by that, so we cannot say enough about being safe, washing your hands, social distancing, and wearing a mask. So again, I really believe it, so I try to do that as often as I can, I tell you, I don't take any chances. And with that, I would say good evening.
All right. Well, first of all, I want to also welcome the 10 new firefighters to the best of the best, because you have truly joined the best of the best with joining our Suffolk firefighters. I want to say cheers to Massimo Zanetti. They've been doing wonderful things in our city for a long time, and we are only excited to see them grow. It is the holiday season, and the Sleepy Hole lights, you know, I was, I have to tell you, Diana, you, it was, it was played down so much that we decided that we would go through, my husband and I first, to see if, then we were going to take the grandson. So we went, and we enjoyed it so much that we took my son and my daughter-in-law and our grandson, not once, but twice. And so it is, it's very cheerful, the two-year-old loved it, my husband actually loved it, and I look forward to it growing and being more and more, but like I say, we were so pleasantly surprised, and the cars were steady going through when we were going through there, so I think it's a great start, and hats off to everybody that had a part in that. Being the holiday season, and this is a different, different holiday season for all of us, I do believe, and Thanksgiving was very small, but, you know, it becomes more intimate and it becomes something special, but at the same time, we're not touching people like we normally do. So yesterday was called Giving Tuesday. If you were on Facebook at all, you would have seen many, many, many fundraisers that were started, where people were joining in and giving money. I actually started a fundraiser for diabetes cures. So, you know, I would say there's so many causes out there, there's just, they're endless, and anything you can do to, just think about it. There's also, you know, Stuff the Police Car, the Great Toys for Tots, the Cheer Fun, the Angel Tree, you know, all of it's being done so easily now, it's all virtual, it's all right there, you can just, you know, put something in. It doesn't matter if it's a dollar. All those dollars add up, and, you know, because of that, children will be happier on Christmas morning for all of these things. And most importantly, I'd just say, it's important to us to reach out and talk to people. There's so many people that are shut in, that are not seeing their families, and a lot of older people that are not used to, you know, not having people come in. So the more we can do, whether it's just a phone call, you know, maybe it's just a knock on the door, and you stand back on the, on the steps, but you say hi, how are you? Ask your neighbors if they're doing okay, because a lot of times, people are lonely, and they're not going to tell you unless we ask. So let's make somebody else's holiday a little brighter, and just try to, try to spread that joy as much as we possibly can, and I think doing that, it'll make us all feel better, and then we're going to be able to all stand out in our front yards on December 31st and make sure that 2020 is officially gone. And I said, "I'm not worried about New Year 2021, that's got to be better than 2020. I'm going to be worried about 2020 leaving." So I think that's something to cheer for on New Year's Eve. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
One more thing, Mayor. I meant to, I missed, I think Councilman Dooman thanked E.C. Harris and the Sheriff's Department for helping Leotis on the turkey giveaway. Couldn't have happened without the sheriffs every year, so I just wanted to send a thank you out to them.
And thank you, Mr. Williams, for the thousands and thousands of turkeys you've given away, so.
Move to approve on adjournment.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Please call the roll. Councilmember Dooman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Miltier?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.